Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting, the Springfield Township Board Supervisors. Would please rise and welcome Mr. Black.
I proudly introduce the stewardess of the United States Senate, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
I want to have a call with the evening, just to shortly is not totally what this day of doing this. Also like to announce that we have no executive session scheduled, and no session on recent. The seat for vacation consists, is there anyone from the public here that would like to address the board? If you would be step to the left turn and say your name and address for the rest.
My name is Tom Curry, I reside at fifty-one Davidson Drive, all within township. I'm just here to thank the township. Yeah, I have been a member for about the last year. And I am very grateful with the township, specifically to a number of people, Mr. Oshkison, Mr. Heilman, Timothy Holmes, Perry Roush, for the work that they have put in, in the, putting together a draft ordinance, which is not specifically up for consideration to the side of the super. Township is a lot of effort and good faith, and I'm very grateful. The, I just also wanted to share with four that there are representatives from the area, Chris Smith, who is president of County Deters Association, as well as Mr. Bailey, and her husband, who keep these at their home. They've been working with us as well, and on behalf of both of them, communicating to me that they're grateful as well.
Thanks.
Did you say your last names?
Curry.
Anyone else this evening? Is there anyone online who would like to speak, if you use the break sound feature? Seeing none, we'll move on. Engineering reports, part one first.
Maybe we have nothing to change or add to the submitted questions?
Got the one here. Thank you, Mr. Executive Chairman. I just have a couple of quick updates for you. The Davies Drives, the East Pan Railroad has completed the concrete crossing, and they believe that their subconsultant diamondback, diamondback and signal people will be the next to mobilize along with the contractor. But we've been in discussions with the contractor, making a couple of tweaks to the plan. You should see dirt soil moving out there in the very future.
Questions for John?
For either John or township staff, do we have barricades out there now at the Davies Drives side of the?
The railroad company put concrete barriers and then had orange barrel, the orange traffic barrels in front of those.
And then that's somebody first.
That's on the first postside.
Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items, any of the board members who might want to go to discussion?
Vice Chair, I move for adoption of the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E, as presented.
Second. Second, I want to say, please say aye.
Aye.
It's proposals and contracts, first one, in traffic signal improvements. Mark, I'm sure you have comments on this.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, this is a project long in the making. We received two Arley grants from Pendon for both intersections, memory lane, industrial highway, Haynes Road, Eastern Boulevard, and both projects are to do a total reconstruction of the track, traffic signals of both of those locations. The combined project is nine hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. The Arley grants cover everything but about five hundred thousand dollars. And difference in the pricing is both grants were submitted three and four years ago, and because of everything that everyone's has experienced over the years, or because of the pandemic, Pendon halted all the grant work. So as time went on and prices went up, that's the difference in the pricing. And I suggest, recommend that we use a portion of our ARPA funds to be our share of the product.
Yeah, why don't you leave me this here project behind?
We do. Off the top of my head, I don't remember how much, but it's not the full amount of the shortfall. So my recommendation is to use ARPA funds for our portion of both projects.
Would we be using those other funds here? Like, how soon will this project start?
It'll start probably in a couple of months, because some of the things have a long lead time, traffic signal poles have a long lead time. I think this project has to be done by May of next year, about twenty-four.
We got the deadline extended because it wasn't enough time, if we try to get it done in six months or eight months, those poles sometimes take as much as money to order again.
So we budgeted an amount less than four five hundred thousand plus minus gap, and propose to use all of the all using ARPA funds to fund all of the gap.
All of the gap.
Correct. What's the strategy for the remainder?
The strategy for the remainder of the ARPA funds is any general fund expenses that we choose. But my suggestion several months ago was to focus that money on infrastructure projects.
Okay, do we think we'll have a?
Yes, we have forthcoming improvements in park and road projects, stormwater projects.
So it does make sense then to use it now, and that creates a little bit of a budget. Be favorable on the budget if you use our.
Correct.
Because we will have that extra.
So question.
Yes.
Any chance of updating the grants? When, is that allowed?
It's not.
In the time going?
It's not allowed. When they froze, do not work on these projects. So we were kind of awarded, and then the pandemic happened, they let freeze. Then when they unfroze, it was at that.
At the end of the push.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move for authorization of word traffic signal improvement projects, JDI group, in a total amount not to exceed nine hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars seventy-one cents. Split with memory lane, industrial highway, portion of the project, four hundred fifty-three thousand four twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. The Haynes Road, Eastern Boulevard portion at four hundred seventy-five dollars, seven twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Four hundred seventy-five thousand.
Trying to give you an adjustment of the funds. Part of the motion.
And to fund any township, sort of all one hundred percent with ARPA funds.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's unanimous. Next on the agenda is to give authorization for the chairman of the township to execute. Grant documents, Mark, is this a base scale of this?
This grant award is for the portable playground equipment that we're planning to put in the Fayetteville Park. And then once Fayetteville Park is redone as part of Pendon's, I rewinding, we can take this same playground equipment and move it elsewhere to another part of the township. So this is authorization for the chairman and myself to sign those documents. And Solicitor Roush has reviewed and had no issue with the documents.
Chairman, I move to authorize Chairman, the Township Manager to execute the CPB local share grant documents for twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, grant award for portable playground.
Second. Second, further discussion? Favorably say aye.
Aye.
There's unanimous. Now, this is to execute a contract to make renovations to our inline face hond.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this is in the twenty twenty-three capital budget to resurface the inline hockey rink within Springfield Park. And this is on credit storage basis.
Questions?
Sir Vice Chairman, I move to authorize what are we authorizing again? Authorization to execute contract with Sabrenham and Company for the renovations to the inline, inline hockey rink surface at Springfield Park in a amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. But who will we authorize? Agenda, let's say, we authorize you. Authorize to township manager, thanks. That's the rest.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Favorably say aye.
Aye.
There's unanimous. On the agenda is to resurface the basketball courts.
Mr. Vice Chairman, these are the outside parks for the neighborhood parks, Spring and Soaks, Penn Oaks, Stonewood, Rockford, Rockburn, Pleasureville parks, the basketball court, this is budgeted within twenty twenty-three capital improvements.
Sir Vice Chairman, I move for authorization to the township manager to execute contract with Sabrenham and Company to resurface and reline basketball courts at Spring and Soaks, Penn Oaks, Stonewood, Rockburn, and Pleasureville parks, in a total amount not to exceed forty-two thousand.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's unanimous. Okay, subdivision of land development, update on Mount Zion Commons.
Good evening, Stacy McFion, here representing Mount Zion Commons this evening. I'm here with Mr. Chris Rickle from Colliers Engineering, and Mr. Dominic McKenna is on scene this evening. So we're here for two purposes. First, it's been a while since we were in front of you with the project and wanted to give you an update on the project and what we've been working on, and kind of where we are with the project at this point. So since we were in front of you last fall, Mr. McKenna has been working to try to solidify potential end users for the site so that we could solidify the final design for the project. And earlier this spring, felt that we were far enough along that we would be able to do that, and we did estimate an informal town center conditional use application to the township for review by staff. We had a meeting with your full staff earlier this month to kind of go through that, talk about concerns, see what we could do to make it a better plan and better project. And then we met last week with your planning commission to do the same thing, the same purpose. So a few things that have changed, most of the project really looks probably very similar to the last time you saw it. A few little changes that we've made here. So first of all, to the east, you'll see we did acquire an official half acre property that will provide the main access on to Market Street. Thus continuing to move the access a little bit further to the east there on Market Street to maximize its ability to have turning movements. We also, you may notice, have added in the Columbia Gas parcel. So right now, the plan is to relocate that district gas building to a property that is north of the site. Really, they're ultimately determined that, I think there wasn't much option, but that we really had to relocate. Certainly, the pipe, the pipe itself is a significant vein, it only lies a few feet below the surface there, so you couldn't really even degrade the site with relocation of the pipe. So in addition to the main being moved, once that need to be moved, it made sense, and Mr. McKenna was able to work out an agreement with Columbia Gas to actually move that whole facility, which we think is going to provide a much better development of this overall property, really give a more cohesive development of the site. The other thing that we did here, really the northern part of the site, is where you're planning to see the most change. We did have a financial institution that had been up on that northwest corner of the site. We no longer have that financial institution. And we had looked at two couple of options for the multifamily component of what we were working on this last year. One was the kind of donut building that we called it, and then one was the two separate units. The ultimate, the multifamily developer, developer who would be part of this project, who kind of does those donut buildings, is now no longer involved. And so the developer that we are now working with on the multifamily component kind of prefers the two separate buildings, which is why we've worked to accommodate that, but yet position them in a way that we're providing still that exterior sort of plaza space for those multifamily buildings, as you can kind of see in that back area. So those are really, frankly, those are the main things that we've changed, I think, when you come south on the site. It's going to continue to look very much like what we saw before. We have kind of a mixed-use commercial building, about twelve thousand square feet along Mount Zion Road. That's a mixture of restaurant without drive-through, restaurant with drive-through, and regular retail, as well as restaurant with drive-through at the corner of Mount Zion and East Market. You'll see just south of that, our public plaza location, which we are working right now on more specific designs for that public plaza location that we will see in more detail when we are. Our estimated timeframe on that is currently, we'd like to submit in May to get in front of the planning commission in June, and potentially a public hearing with this board before the end of June. And that's at least our current target. So that's where we are with the project, and I know you haven't heard from us a whole lot over the past maybe six months or so, but please be sure Mr. McKenna has been working quite aggressively to try and get this, continue to move this forward. There's been a lot of work that's been put into it from that time to where we are today. So the second reason why I'm here today is we met with staff, we talked with staff, and they were of course aware that we had submitted a parking variance request to address really what we felt was a matter of right sizing the parking for this type of mixed-use shared facility development. And one of the discussions I think we had with staff is that if we were, if the township was in a different position as it relates to your zoning ordinance and knowing you're going through comprehensive planning right now, et cetera, we might actually be back saying, hey, maybe we should be looking at some possible text amendments to some of those provisions in your zoning ordinance, specifically as it relates to maybe your restaurants with drive-throughs and your shared parking calculations. So it was suggested that perhaps, you know, we could come to the board and see, explain to the board what the parking variance request was, and see whether the board would maybe be willing to offer some support for this parking variance. I'd like to give you a little bit of information about why we're requesting variance, and more specifically, kind of what that variance request is. What it boils down to really is an overall reduction in parking for the site. So currently, your ordinance, I think, would require four hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces for this site, and we're providing around three hundred and ninety-five. Where there's still kind of, as we're making last minute tweaks of the plan, those numbers keep going up and down by one or two slices. The way we kind of condense that in terms of the variance request is to really focus on the multifamily component and the component response with drive-throughs. So your multifamily requirements and your zoning ordinance are really the same as your requirements for single-family detached, single-family semi-detached. In Springfield, any dwelling unit requires two parking spaces. And we believe that in this particular context, that one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, which is basically what we come out with, is going to be appropriate. We think that for a few reasons. So first of all, our multifamily developer, Inching Company, has indicated to us that they have a multifamily project in Mount Wallfunder construction right now. They're using one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, and it's the same size apartments, the same kind of mix in terms of one bedroom, two bedrooms, and that they believe that model works well for them. They've also used that model previously a couple of years ago, and I think it was Marietta. And that's up and running, and they feel that there is more than sufficient parking on site for that. They are indicating they're looking to have about fifty-five percent one bedrooms here and forty-five percent two bedrooms. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I also have had experience in these types of situations where if you're talking about apartments, then of course, there can be restrictions on the number of cars the tenants can have, for if it becomes necessary to do that. Again, our multifamily developer doesn't believe that that's necessary, they believe that generally, even so, even if the multifamily were on a separate unit, separate lot by itself, without the ability to use any shared parking, they believe that they would get sufficient parking at the site. So shifting to your restaurants with drive-through, interestingly, your ordinance provides that restaurants without drive-throughs need to have ten spaces for every one thousand square feet of space. That's compared to other commercial or retail uses, which are four point five spaces. Your restaurants with drive-throughs actually require fifteen spaces for one thousand square feet. So actually require fifty percent more parking than a restaurant that does not have a drive-through. And I obviously maybe, you know, when this ordinance was adopted, maybe, certainly the industry has changed, especially over the past few years. And so I assume that at the time, that that was based on industry standards. The industry standards now for restaurants with drive-throughs is really to have less and less need for parking and more and more drive-through space. And so we have really developed our two restaurants with drive-throughs here to, again, maximize that drive-through space, queuing area, and limit the actual parking spaces based on what our end users are saying their needs and demands are. So we've individually looked at those particular uses. Those two are identified as ones where we believe that the industry standards are less than what your ordinance requirements are. We also have a very unique situation here, in that this is a mixed-use development with shared parking facilities. So this will be reversed up divided into one lot, and we will have shared parking facilities over the lot. So I did today, you see, from TPD, a study which we're still finalizing for the zoning hearing next week, but basically goes through that whole analysis. For each one of these uses, what is the ITE say is necessary for parking? What does the ITE say? Are there peak hours for parking? And then how does that apply in this mixed-use context with the amount of square footage we have for these various uses? And what they have indicated here is that if all of these uses had peak hours at the same time, the ITE would indicate that you would need at least three hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces for a Saturday, and three hundred and seventy-seven during the peak hour, well, on a weekday. So less than three hundred and ninety-five that we're providing. But then they further go on and analyze how this works when you break it down in terms of actually those different peak hours for those different types of uses. And when they go through that study and that calculation, what they determine is that you really need the peak hour, the time during the weekday, or rather during the Saturday, when there would be the greatest need for parking in a mixed-use site like this, is between noon and one P M on Saturday, and that would be two hundred and thirty-four spaces. And that your peak hour, let me see if I can find it here, during the week is also noon to one P M, and that you're looking at two hundred and eighty-five spaces that's being required. So we believe that, you know, the mixture of uses and that shared parking on site also plays into this consideration. The third factor that we're looking at here is that we're trying to build something in your town center overlay that is to be a walkable community. And we are providing pedestrian connectivity. We believe that having these apartments on site will have consumers and customers who will be walking to facilities on site. We will be providing some interconnection to residential neighborhoods surrounding this, and our hope is that they will be also walking to uses on site. And so the goal is to have more people actually walking or riding their bikes to uses on site as opposed to necessarily driving their cars. Ultimately, if the difference between the type, the amount of parking we're providing here and the amount of parking that your ordinance would require is approximately three quarters of an acre of land. And obviously, my client's not interested in necessarily having three quarters of an acre of this very valuable property turned into parking lot if it's not needed for parking. But likewise, we don't think that really meets the intent of the town center overlay, which would actually create a larger parking lot that people need to potentially walk over to get to their various destinations. And it would also mean that we're taking three quarters of an acre of what's the township is very valuable property, and also putting it into parking, which again, our data indicates is not necessary. It is important to my client and the end users of this property that there be sufficient parking for their needs. If there isn't sufficient parking on site, that will impact on the viability of these end users on site. So it is important to us that we provide adequate parking, and my client believes that we are definitely doing that. So I wanted to kind of give you that information and, you know, present that for your consideration and see if you have any, any questions for us.
Stacy.
Go ahead.
Stacy, I'm in your letter here, you had mentioned some of these national standards or national studies with regard to parking rates. You cite what those were. Is that the ITA you mentioned?
The ITE is, yes, that's your national manual that covers traffic and park.
And could you walk me through the, or do I understand from your presentation, new map, that we're increasing the amount of multifamily square footage?
I think we are at or less than the number of units that we had on the prior plan. So we're at. Yeah, we're at a hundred and forty units. I don't, honestly, I don't remember exactly what the number was when we were here before, but I want to say. If that we're in the ballpark.
But we are reducing the amount of units of commercial space because you're you're losing.
Yeah, so we lost, we lost the financial institution, which was around five, maybe four thousand square feet.
And the U building also, do I understand that?
The U building?
For the.
That was multifamily.
Oh, okay.
That was small. That was the multifamily building that then has kind of been separated into this L shape instead of the donut shape.
Okay, all right, that's kind of all right. So where I was going with that is that it's the same amount of row square footage?
I don't know. John, do you know?
Yeah, so the number of units is less, uh, we were proposing um well over. I think it was well over a hundred and sixty units previously. Um, so we'll turn that back to a hundred and forty minutes. The structure that was previously shown, which we refer to as the square donut. Um, that um. That took up basically a large block. It was one big square. Um, this is uh, this footprint, uh, these two footprints here are roughly. Three oh four. By, you're talking about, the question is on the uh, the ground floor.
Square footage? Or the overall?
I I was just trying to get the overall and get a sense of what the parking need really would be in compared to the original plan.
Yeah, I think overall, the the square footage is just about the same um on the ground. But the vertical is also in this case four stories. Um, but less overall square footage, if that makes sense, because before we had well over a hundred and sixty units. Um, we have the same sizing of units and units, single and. Uh, one bedroom and two bedroom units. Um, so overall, I can certainly get what the ground floor square footage was on that original. Prototype versus this, but you're looking at at least twenty units less than what we were previously proposing.
And thus, what twenty units less, you're still running into the challenge of parking ratios since the conversation. Stacy, has this gone to the planning commission for any feedback at this point, or is it just right now because we're still going through the zoning hearing process?
So the the town center overlay application went to planning condition last week. The the variance application does not go to planning. So um, we did get feedback from them on on the overall kind of additional use site. They did express, we we mentioned, we had the parking variance. I will say they did express concerns about that. I I will say I wasn't really prepared to address the parking variance with them. I didn't have the information that we'll have for the zoning hearing board. Or that I even have tonight necessarily.
And this is probably more of a question for township staff. Do we have other multifamily locations where we branded a similar parking? Rans, not meaning. That either, any of you know of?
Mom, is this the extent or is it some minor? Went to zoning hearing board for that. Twenty-four units, the one that's still awaiting. I know submission on on the East Market Street. They needed forty-eight. They asked for variance or they have forty-one, forty-two states. So it was a reduction of six or seven spaces from what they were required to. To the extent of what they're asking the answer is no.
So like those townhomes on Weatherford Drive, what comes to my mind, those are two spots for every unit?
As far as we know, yes. Uh, yeah, that's our ordinance requirement for apartments and. Single-family homes.
Must be uh, it's for the part of apartments.
No, like uh, that would be a little rise, but still it adds two parking spaces for all of you.
Okay.
Whether there be condos, like the Pash condos to our south here. Those all require two parking spaces. For dwelling in and some of those added additional parking for vendors and things of that.
We found um not only with um Inch, but in the previous developer, uh, Western Development out of Philadelphia that. Um, multiple projects either underway or have been completed in the last five years. All are generally about um anywhere from one point three to one point five spaces per unit.
Oh, I have.
And look, do you know what uh, each requirement is? And Stacy, I've got a couple of questions. Um, first one that. Concerns me about this project from the start is have you been through Pendot and are you going to have? Full turn access out of those roads?
We we will have, uh, all applications are that we will have full turning access on the East Market Street. Three quarters access on the Mount Zion. So Mount Zion will have a right out, a right in and a left in. There has, we've been through um and John, you probably give me a little bit better on this, but we've been through scoping. Um, we are, I think we've submitted a traffic impact study, you see the comments and are replying back to those comments.
Uh, that's correct. We we had a scoping application meeting. We've uh now that have had our second turn of. Comments from from Pendot that we resubmitted uh just last week. Um, we provided a copy to the township and Mr. Luciani. Um, and so that incorporated a very detailed study. Of roughly, I believe, eight or nine intersections. As to uh the volumes at those intersections and the impact. It went on to include um gap studies, uh queuing. Uh, as as part of the data in this and according to our traffic engineer, T P D. Um, the full access as shown here on East Market Street is warranted and we do have the gaps. Uh, uh, to provide uh safe uh movements, turning left out of that. Main driveway. So that would be full access and as Stacy indicated. Mount Zion Commons, a a left out would be restricted there.
Is there um the center turn lane on Smart is extended?
Yes, the the center, the center turn lane is um provides for roughly about two hundred foot. Of center turn lane traveling uh eastbound on East Market Street, uh sufficient length. Distance uh for cars to get into the center turning lane stack to make the turns. Into uh the development on East Market Street.
Thank you.
And on Mount Zion Road, we are going as part of. The preliminary design that we submitted to Pendot is to provide for traveling southbound on Mount Zion Road. A dedicated left-hand turn lane uh into uh the development.
Not telling you from southbound.
To perfect.
Second question, the uh. Donut-shaped facility, as I always need story building, we had some concerns with firefighting. Those two buildings are four and five now, we're going to be four stories, did I have that right?
That's right.
A little bit of choice and roughly the same number of apartments in the four stories than would have been in the.
Yeah, a few less.
Few less, yeah, okay. Oh, is there any retail in either of those buildings on the first floor or are they going to be strictly apartment buildings?
Uh, it's strictly, strictly, unit four and unit five will be strictly apartment. And they'll have some.
Sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, they'll have some common uh, look, have some. Down on the ground floor, uh gym and 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 general lobby areas.
So Stacy, was parking ratios an issue in the first plan?
So, um, I guess I can't really answer that and I don't know if. Chris, we frankly may just not have gotten into that level of detail um at that stage.
We are, we're not, Stacy, I can uh uh attest to the fact that. Yeah, it's about a little, it was about one point five also in the first plan, but we can get that data to the township.
Yeah, the other thing is we had the donut-shaped building, Chris reminded me, we had underground parking with that building. That isn't going to be feasible um with this design.
So I understand the shared parking concept, does that mean? That a resident of the apartment buildings. And all the parking spaces in this area are first come, first served. There's no assigned parking.
That, that's correct. Um, you know, as we had discussed with the planning commission. We would envision at your um, like at your restaurant areas, there might be one or two designated spaces like they like to have for the. You know, ten-minute pickup locations. Other than that, we're not envisioning any sort of designated spaces on site. So overall, it will be first come, first served. That means that the, if you are um a resident and you come home at noon on Friday. You may be parking further away than you otherwise would be. Um, but then if you're a resident and you come home at ten o'clock on Tuesday. You you very well kind of have a, you know, a nice convenient parking spot. Um, but the goal is again to have a community that works cohesively together. And uh hopefully people don't mind walking, you know, from potentially one end of the site to the other. That's what we'd like to see them doing.
I thought I heard a remark, maybe I heard it wrong, that. A certain scenario, you reduce the number of spaces per unit. But how would you do that if there's no assigned?
No, so we're really just, when we're looking at the numbers and trying to make sure that we have sufficient parking at site. On the site, for example, we look at them all individually as uses. And so by doing that, you know, we've been able to say, well, if you had. X amount of parking spaces for this use and that use, you would end up with one point five spaces for the apartments. But the reality is it's all shared, which is that kind of evaluate that um calculation and analysis that T P D. Is is going.
So parking is provided on both sides of three, four and five, so I assume that the apartments will face in and out of the center? Is that correct?
I don't know, John, if you know the answer to that.
I'm sorry, I I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
Sure, yeah. Do the apartments face both um. So apartment floor, both north and south and the five east and west? So that the parking on both sides is utilized by people that can get directly into their apartments?
Yeah, so i- if there there's going to be an access in the uh, on the west side of. Uh, unit five, you see that uh, kind of the landing area as you drive up. Um, and right in the center of unit five, and then there will be an access, an entrance. Uh, on the uh, on the rear and generally the same location. Uh, does that answer your question?
I think so. Um, so.
And the same with unit four, you can see actually the the detail a little bit closer. Um, or a little bit more discernible on unit four, you can actually see. Um. The access, um, the entry from the rear. From the north side of unit four, you can see it clearly there, where that blue vehicle is. Yeah, the intent certainly isn't to have parking back there and for. The residents to have to, you know, traverse the whole building to get to the front. There will be rear access.
Will they both be elevator buildings, I guess?
I don't know. Yeah, elevator, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, so there would be, I would assume, you know, you're going to have your core lobby area that will allow for. Rear or front ingress, egress with main elevator and probably some stairs there and then there'll be other locations, I'm sure, with the stair towers as well. So, um, we would, you know, respectfully request that the board would consider um. Standing a stamp representative to the zoning hearing board to indicate support for our parking.
I've heard this proposal before, done any type of analysis at this point, or just as cold as you as it's discussed?
Well, we remain aware, because everyone received the zoning variance request, so fire, you that was not aware of it. Uh, you know, it was discussed uh at staff level and then planning commission did have an opportunity. At least to make some comment. Uh, and I think I've stated, I mean, I at least I believe I did uh to the planning commission. That I do know these type of things can work. Uh, it it has worked in other places. Uh, now she didn't, maybe tried to not state specific examples of all of that I surmise, but. There are examples that do exist out there that do this type of shared. Type of parking for developments such as this. And the planning profession would like to see those type of things utilized in part because this is supposed to be pedestrian oriented. With the sidewalk that's going to be there and so forth, that I think. Proposal of seeing folks walking from one building to another. Would like to see that occur, but so it's not quite so automobile oriented. So would in fact be a place that people want to walk to. Um. So obviously they're stating the facts of of what the numbers may indicate, but have I personally done a study on that or analysis? The answer is no, David, but I do know there's examples out there uh nationwide. Where these type of things can do work.
I guess what I, what I wonder, thinking out loud here. If this, if this variance ends up being granted. And they get it wrong and now there's not enough parking. Where do the residents, then they're going to park somewhere, so, but there are inherent consequences in a neighboring neighborhood. Now they've got a parking problem because the overflow is going there.
I would say that that's could be a correct assumption. We got to count on that they're providing us legitimate examples and legitimate calculations. For developments such as this, that in fact, we are going to have adequate parking on the surface, you think. That's not the case, that most folks have at least two cars, sometimes uh a couple has three vehicles in certain circumstances. Um, so you got to take that into account, obviously using the I T E manual, so forth to try to. Make their argument, if you will. Uh, so, yeah, I I think. Some future analysis may be necessary from from the staff level. Obviously, they're going to be showing hearing board next week, so. That's a difficult task to get accomplished within a week, so that's why I'm just stating somewhat generality terms that. I do know these type of things can work and have worked. Whether it works here in Springfield Township. I think that's a little bit of a challenging question to answer because we don't have another example such as this to offer. It's here in Springfield.
If if I could interject for just a second, um, as it relates to the residential and this operation, the multifamily. Developer uh Inch, uh Stacy cited a few examples of projects that uh one was completed just a few years ago at. The one and a half and another one is underway. Um, you know, I asked that very question is, uh. It, it seems to be industry standards now that, that it is closer to one and a half. Um, but I asked if it did become a problem, how would they handle that? And that is generally, you know, once they're. Either fully leased or close to it, if there's a, there's a, an issue with parking. For whatever reason, that's, uh, it's an anomaly that more, um, more residents here have more, more, uh. Vehicles per unit than it typically, uh, they would institute, um, you know, in the new residents signing up. A restrictive covenant so that they could only have one, one, um, one vehicle. And I think that's pretty much how they. Um, indicated how they, they manage it effectively because they want it, obviously it has to be operationally efficient for them and that facility. And, uh, it can't create hardships for, for a particular resident. So, uh, in essence, what they do is they implement a restrictive covenant. In the very lease. Uh, you know, again, it's not the first tenant to, to lease up the space. It's probably close to the last. 5% of, of the tenants, if in fact that was the case, or at some time in the future.
Yeah. And I, I would say with this property in particular, uh, you know, I do think that if. There would be complaints and maybe the complaints would be more from our commercial tenants. That their customers don't have adequate places to park. Um, that's, that's going to have to be the resolution because frankly. There aren't a lot of easily accessible places where people can park and walk to this site. Um, they're not parking along outside the road or, or East Market Street. Um. And but certainly, uh, I think any new development welcomes to hear, uh, if there are things that are happening that are unexpected. Regardless of what that might be, and we do have mechanisms in place that then we can make adjustments and address that.
Yeah, there will be a, this will be a declaration of condominium here, and, uh, we are going to have bylaws, rules. And regulations that, uh, unit four and five will, will have to adhere to as well as the tenants in these commercial establishments. So. Uh, they will be, you know, closely monitored and, and enforced. Uh, and restrictions imposed if, if necessary beyond what's part of the initial declaration.
So technical question, Randall, John, do we have any other mixed use with multifamily? Projects in the township to kind of use this shared parking model? Present. Where we have, well, no, we haven't granted the one I have, like space, but is there any other mixed use residential slash commercial? Projects. I can't think of any. Residential, residential.
Supposed to be on the corner of, plus a valley outside.
And they went fickle faith to residential.
Right. So that's pure residential.
In anticipation of the, of the zoning hearing board next Thursday, we are going to be gathering, uh, data. From other municipalities, uh, and other mixed use developments that were built in the last five to 10 years. So that we can provide, um. Uh, testimony as to the operational efficiencies of similar projects, albeit outside the township.
Well, without building an underground parking garage, if you were to reduce those two buildings to three stories from four stories. I think you'd get a lot closer to the two per unit that affects your finances for the center. I don't know if that's too different for an inch or not.
So, yeah.
I guess from my perspective is that what I'm hearing is the national standards moved to a lower parking ratio for multifamily. This is a unique multifamily slash commercial site. Perhaps our only one now in the township since the one project there plus valley amounts I converted. I generally support. The concept of using this reduced parking. Ratio variance. And it's certainly something that our comprehensive plan should look at as go through the weaknesses, like. It sounds like, from what I'm understanding, Randall took this more like a trend. To, to go in this direction and from what correct, and what the applicant is saying is that it does work. It seems to be the national standard.
That would be correct as well. By the foolish, foolish comment that 15 spaces per. The restaurant use with the drive-through is ridiculous and we'd be addressing that, I'm sure. But I'm not comfortable yet that one and a half spaces is sufficient for, for apartment users. I especially two bedroom apartment users, they could easily be three cars. Most people, most people who live in apartments have two jobs. So there's a husband and a wife that both agree. So until, until I'm, I'm new to that.
John, your thoughts?
I agree 100% with Supervisor Worster. And I think that we should elect, we should direct the, uh. Township manager to make sure that, uh. Wishes of the Board of Supervisors to support their variance be made clear at the zoning hearing board meeting next week.
Well, it's been an interesting position. I would just say, I, I'm not at all opposed to reducing the concept of reducing parking. But to be in cold like this without a lot of data to support it, I mean, I heard. To break down a number of things you said, and certainly does seem to run in that is that direction, not staff having looked at it. I'm just reluctant. To send someone to say I'm advocating for something when I'm not 100% sure. So I would be inclined, I'm certainly in a position to wish you well at zoning here. I'd be reluctant to send someone on my behalf to say I'm in favor of this. It's just not very, I may get there.
Sure. Anything?
Mr. Swammy on, or two, two?
Uh, no, no action, no action.
Well, as always, we.
I mean, you're not opposing, so.
Right.
Oh, well, yes, definitely. It was reaching me here.
And, and for the, the word information, now that you've made a neutralized decision. When we met with them, we brought those same issues. If there's an overflow of parking. The board has dealt with that on some successful restaurants, as you may have been called. And those restaurants, I remember, uh, Eagles Nest, I'm sure, we had residents complaining there was parking going out in their streets. They were busing people to Eagles Nest when they were in their heyday. Now it seems to have calmed down, but we said, let's plan B if you're really successful. Obviously. Orders. And that has sustained pretty much, or maybe show me it works.
And I would also agree with the comment that was made that we should put this as part of our comprehensive and see what. This is something we should memorialize and, uh, need our changes as well.
Yeah.
And once a, a question submitted or a comment from the public, if like. Would you like me to?
So, so the intent is actually to, uh, I think the question is about putting a pedestrian connection. To the multifamily that's there to the east. And there is an intent to have a pedestrian connection in that location. Um, to the extent we can, by, I, I'm not seeing it here, but I know we talked about that, about putting an opening in our vegetation in that location to allow. Some connection.
A John's picture there on the. There's a driveway.
Okay. So there is, we will be extending, as we discussed before, you don't see it on this plan, but we will be extending. The East Market Street, street skate all the way east to Eisenhower Drive. Um, so there will be that pedestrian connection for the 12 foot sidewalk with eight foot landscape strip all the way along East Market Street. But we had also had some discussion about whether, now we can't, we're not building anything obviously on their property. But we could at least leave some opening possibly in our vegetative buffer up closer to the multifamily or. Uh, between the multifamily and the C store to allow if, if people wanted to walk over in that location. Um, from the multifamily. That's something that we are, we're still looking at. Again, that, that's hard because. We can put it there, but they don't, you know, they don't necessarily have walking paths in their property and vegetation. But we certainly will have the sidewalk, street, street, street skate connection available.
I've seen in other parts of the township that certain these paths start to form between connecting properties. So.
That, that's, that's right. If you, if you don't put it there, something eventually does happen a lot of times.
But to the extent that you can make that formal, that would be wonderful. And talking with the adjacent property, we'd like to see that formal.
Yeah, Stacy, um, I, I had a question. Did, um, did Randall and, and Mr. Luciani have, have the, um. Opportunity to review, I guess it's just hot off the press, the ITE data that Eric Monse had prepared for this mixed use?
No, and, and John, it actually needs a few tweaks. So I didn't necessarily give it when it's not in final form.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a note here. I do expect we'll have that in final form early next week. I'll send it in advance though, so you have that in advance of the zoning hearing.
If you also can super easy.
Thank you. It's always going to appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Steve.
Sir Vice Chairman, I'd like to give a brief update of my time at the Pennsylvania State Association Township Supervisors Annual Conference, which we held earlier this week. I know that you are all burning to, uh, anticipation to understand the outcome of all the resolutions. Last, um, meeting, uh, but just to recognize that these resolutions are important because they do set the policy. For the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. As far as their advocacy efforts with the state legislature may change. So, but that, I'll just. Have you rest easy to know that most of the resolutions pretty much followed along the guidance that was provided by our resolution committee? Most were approved as recommended. A couple were rejected. And there were, I'll just highlight those two. There was an effort by the delegation from Bucks County through the 10,000 or the. Townships with population over 10,000 persons, of which I sit on that, um, standing committee. Bucks County had initiated efforts to try to put restrictions and additional requirements and 180 day waiting periods as well as. Requirements for townships or municipal authorities to notify all residents or all customers by mail. Of the intent to sell a municipal asset. The floor essentially voted down a lot of those restrictions. So if we were to ever contemplate. Selling any of our utility assets, we will not be burdened by such things. So that won't be coming out of PSAT. The other item, which I want to thank Mark Hodgkinson for bringing to my attention was an interesting resolution trying to. And after meeting, it's so weird. The PSAT seeks legislating, legislation to authorize municipalities to enact ordinances. Regulating the land application of bio solids. So it turns out that a lot of our fellow townships throughout the Commonwealth do similarly what we do. Use our bio solids to fertilize land. I buy a solid, you not. That the, uh, the floor actually voted this down. So this was defeated despite having the support from the resolution. So that's really the big outcome there. We reelected our officers as, uh, for another additional terms, which is commonly the custom. And I did have the opportunity to attend numerous training sessions. There are a lot of training sessions, uh, too many. One person said 10. Uh, but the most interesting one that, that I attended was the emergency management use of commercial drones. And I thought it was very interesting that there are certain emergency management agencies that use drones with thermal camera. Apparatus in order to assess fires, be it a fire on a traffic accident scene. Or if it's a residential structure or any kind of structured fire, to be able to assess where the fire is, where the people are inside. And where the actual firefighters are relative to all of that. So that's something that I'll certainly be taking back to Yoffa and to explore. Though it's very interesting, it provides a benefit. And these drones are not cheap, and it does require a certain FAA licensing, but I think it's something worth exploring. So I'll think around after if anyone has any questions, uh, for me. Happy to represent Springfield for any comments.
Thank you for attending, Charles. Appreciate that.
Okay, moving on. So what's your report, Charlie? Yeah, I, um, forwarded to the board, uh. We drafted beekeeping ordinance, sort of amalgam, uh. The model beekeeping ordinance. With staff comments and comments from working group, model ordinances from the Pennsylvania State Beekeepers Association. For the board's review and consideration. And I also included. In that ordinance, uh. I highlighted a few remaining. Outstanding issues, uh. Concerning mainly, um. Whether, uh. The apiaries or beehives, um, should be located in the front yard. The model ordinance. Does not allow them in the front yard. Um, so I included that in the draft ordinance. The working groups would like to allow them in the front yards for 30 quarts. We actually, it's not that we prohibit them. We, in terms of any large parcels in the township, we put in 100 foot setback. Farm, somebody else, a lot of acreage, and it shouldn't be an issue, but otherwise if you're not. Don't have that 100 foot setback, then you would not be allowed to be hiding. Uh, the working group wanted to have a 30 foot setback. With, um. A beehive not being able to be located within 10 feet of residential entranceway so that. People coming and going. Postal workers or whatever, would not necessarily, um. Come into contact with bees or beehive. Um, the other. Issue is the height density. Um, the model ordinance had, uh, for your first 2,000 square feet, two hives and for every. Additional 2,000 square feet, a lot of area, you could have two additional hives. When you do the calculations, I think the staff felt that that was a little, little too, uh. High. So we put in, um, restrictions based on, on the acreage. The working group. At least for, um. Properties that were more than a quarter acre. They wanted to increase the hives. Really by, well, by two, by. From six to eight into one quarter, but less than one half acre and eight to 10. Um, from one half acre to one acre over an acre. Uh, they wanted to go from 10 to 15. When we look at the model ordinance, like for instance, for the one quarter acre size, which is 10,890 square feet. We would allow four hives. If you were to use the model ordinance calculation, it would be about 10. So that's sort of a different state. Um. So really what it comes to, I mean, I, I don't really have much, too much of an issue with increasing the height densities. Suppose. I think the real issue is whether or not. The board would want to see these in front yard. And I don't know if there's any comments that the audience would like to add with this. So.
Yeah, we do have, I think, I've understood several folks here who want to speak on this topic. Certainly welcome to talk now or address the. How much you'd like to make about this particular draft ordinance. Certainly welcome any feedback.
The only thing I will point out is that this ordinance is drafted so that. We need, we're going to, we need, we'd be taken out of zone. So we actually need to amend the definition, baby area to leave, I'm sorry, definition of agriculture to delete apiaries. This would be a standalone ordinance and code of law. So beehives would be allowed anywhere in the township, provided that they
Would that then open the door to other? Let's say I want to milk rattlesnakes.
My my guess is that would fall under something medical, or you know what I'm saying? I mean, or um I hear what you're saying. You know.
So I want chickens for the eggs. Do they pay prices or something?
Yes.
Still follow up in our zoning, those those are, I mean, still.
Oh, those still under zone?
Yeah.
Correct. And this would only
My other question. Charlie, I'm I'm trying to decide whether this is a hobby or whether this is a business. And if it's a hobby, I would think four or five hives would be fine. If it's a business, and the more you have, the more production you can get. These should be presented on days being
Well, I I don't know that I uh that um if the farmers have enough to answer that question, maybe somebody can be high.
The business in in conflict with the resident.
You know, I, the business obviously would be, I guess, collecting and selling honey, I would imagine, but I don't know. I I don't know. I don't, I don't know what to do.
So I'm Chris Smith, uh President of York County Beekeepers. So typically in the beekeeping world, uh one to twenty hives is considered obvious. Twenty to eighty hives is what they call a sideline. That'd be someone who has a full-time job somewhere else, but kind of does this on the side, but more than a hobbyist. And when you get above eight, that tends to be, if I'm more of a commercial person, so. Uh we have several folks have three hundred hives, so that, you know, that's a lot to manage.
Chris, can you speak to loss as well?
Yeah, so that's a great que- that's a great question. So uh one of the reasons for having more than one or two or three hives is because of annual loss everywhere. So um because of a lot of things that the bees are facing today from pests, from pesticides, uh loss of habitat, things like that. We're we're having a lot higher, we're dealing with with a lot higher loss ratios than we have in the past. In the past, twenty years ago, typically you were ten or fifteen percent was normal. Today it's closer to fifty percent. So if I go into winter with four hives, I'm lucky to see two come out. It's typically about what we're seeing at this point. So that's the reason for me granting those extra or asking for those extra hives to be allowed. So it's not necessarily because of volume or for sale or anything like that, I guess, business per se.
And so how much honey do you get out of it? I mean, if you're, if you're a hobbyist, are you doing it? What are you, are you doing it for honey or are you doing it to to keep the bee population alive?
Uh honestly, for me personally, um it 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 tended to become an issue more for our garden. Uh because we have a twenty by sixty garden and uh we were finding issue or having issues that uh a lot of our plants would bloom and then they would just weather and do nothing unless we went out and took Q tips and went into each of the flowers. And uh I said, you know, it's gotta be little critters to do that and I don't have time to do that. So uh we we got into the bees and uh that solved that problem. So that's what it turned out to be for us uh personally. Yeah, we just don't have the bees like we used to.
But do you use the honey?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Doesn't need to be like pastoral. I mean, how do you, what do you do? Can you just eat it raw?
You can eat it raw. A lot of people do eat it raw. Uh that actually gives you the most health benefits if you follow a lot of the current science and so forth. Uh so I actually sell raw honey myself. Um I mean, you know, again, I have a normal job, so that's not gonna replace my job anytime soon. I make maybe a couple thousand dollars a year, so it's not, uh and and that was off of uh, I I personally harvested seven hundred pounds of honey last year. So that was off of thirty-two hives. So York County's not a huge um input for bees. Um you know, they basically make enough honey to survive and not much more than that. Uh if you go up into the north, uh like around I eighty-one that area in Pennsylvania, uh they're seeing upwards of a hundred and fifty or two hundred pounds of honey per hive. Whereas down here in York area, it's more like seventy-five pounds of honey per hive. They're just, uh because it's not as much food form down here to generate, so it's not as lucrative as it is for growing.
So what is the ecological benefit to having the bees in front?
That tends to have to do more with the sun. So if the backyard is shaded, um that's gonna affect the bees. The bees need a lot of sun in order to be the most effective. Uh the sun affects them, so as soon as the sun hits the front of their hive, they wake up and start flying and and start doing their thing. The more that they're shaded, the the more they stay behind and the the less work they get done. So that's where that comes in. So what, one of our thinkings with the proposal for, you know, I'll put it in the front, which is unlike many other things that you might propose to put in a front yard, a lot of beehives are more of a decorative thing. Like a garden or something like that. Um so we were thinking that it would be more eye appeal effects. I'm not sure the term you guys would use, but uh it would just be a nicer looking thing than, you know, some other things that could be preferred. So that was kind of part of the reason. But yeah, a lot of it has to do with uh the sun placement. So.
Chris, why, why do you think, why does, do you have a big gun with model ordinance prohibited?
I I honestly don't know. That's uh very strange to me. So. And and I know one of your residents, that is specifically the issue that um she ran into. So that was one of the reasons that we're looking for this.
That's why it's in the front yard is because that's what the
That's exactly right. Says where the majority of the sun hits, the back where it's shaded, so they don't get as much efficacy. That's exactly right.
So. But not everybody has a eastern face.
That's correct. So it wouldn't apply to everyone. I agree. Um we're just looking for the opportunity that if that is the case, that the board can allow that. That's what, that's what we're asking for consideration.
And then our zoning ordinance, any accessory structures, sheds, pools, things of that nature are always prohibited in the front yard.
Yeah, but we're talking about things smaller than this podium, so.
Several.
I don't think you're gonna find many people doing that. I'm I'm the crazy one at those things, so. But I've been on twenty-five acre farm, so I'm also not trying to put it on a, you know, cat favorite plot or something like that. So, yeah, we certainly understand having reason, reasonable boundaries. So, absolutely.
So I don't know if you want to take a shot at this, but I think when Mr. Carey first did his presentation, he asked two questions, two concerns that I had. Since that time, neither have no one spoken to those, someone resurfaced, both of them, and I, one specific one, he shot at. My concern is children, maybe adults for that matter, who stray into a neighbor's yard who has hives and ends up with a medical issue because of getting stung. His children, you tell them not to do something, they still do it anyway. So what mechanisms are in place to prevent that, or is that just a roll of dice we have to take by allowing hives in residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, that that's a great question. Um I don't know if I'm necessarily the best one to answer that, because I I don't deal with that. What I can tell you is um the bees, I mean, that would have to be a very specific scenario because the bees are not, you know, contrary to recent movies, they're not childrens where they're going out and attacking people that are in the area. You really gotta be, you know, rattle them on their their box to do that. The reason they come out and do that is to defend their home. So that would have to be a very specific scenario to to have that happen. Um So again, I'm not sure. I'm really the best one to answer that, but um I mean, I think it's reasonable to say if you're gonna have bees, talk to your neighbors, make them aware of everything, you know, what's going on and everything, but uh you know, aside from that, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm the best one to answer, to answer that.
Thank you. Charlie, the ordinance that that's being presented, subjected ordinance. Is there anything in there where neighbors can say, I don't want to be, I'm being nasty. So what's this random?
No, and really, you know, the supervisor cops farted up at the address to get out the nuisance. There's a nuisance clause in the model ordinance.
Correct.
And then what if somebody moves and a new neighbor, you know, you can't, it's just too hard. It would be very too hard. Once you get down to the front. This ordinance, no. The presumption is that if somebody, if the homeowner follows these rules or regulations that it's presumptively that it's, wouldn't be a, basically what.
And I can, and I can tell you that when I work in hives, I have people from E U A, no problem at all, absolutely zero problem. So I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So I'm David Kayle. I was part of the uh committee and um to address the concern about children, we have three young children in our house. We were, we were the ones that kind of started this issue with the bees. If you remember, I was um at the meeting back in Denver and then we had a zoning meeting as well. Um we do have hives out in front of our house and we have three young children. Um I have no concerns about children's safety. I'm actually allergic to bees. Um I was concerned at first when my wife wanted to get the bees, but I think after educating myself, um the honeybees are docile. They're uh not like you see movies with the or anything be concerned like the ordinance or laws, where they're just gonna randomly attack people. So uh we have people that go in and out of our house all the time. Um I'll drink my morning coffee on the front porch within five feet of the beehives. They don't bother you. They just want to work. So unless you're actually going in the hives and working with them, they're not gonna bother you. So we have um people that deliver packages all the time to our front porch, people that come and go. They don't bother anyone unless you're actually getting to the hives. We had several neighbors with young children and um they have no concerns about it either. They uh for the most part, we have a majority support from the neighborhood, from the neighbors that that actually enjoys the bees. People walk by, they walk their pets, walk their kids, ride their bikes by our house all the time. We've never had any complaints or issues about um stinging. Uh again, they're they're pretty generally docile. And just to address the uh concern about the front, I think the hundred-foot setback for agricultural like back of the house, which may be closer to the front of the street than what we would have for the front lawn. So it just makes sense to have some work in there and allow that as well.
So if we would grant this thirty feet from front door setback, you're we're uh set up with a
Right, yeah, we uh we've measured it out. We were actually um, I think a little further, but we think that thirty foot is appropriate.
I've heard from some of your neighbors since we're
Okay, good. Yeah, we um for the zoning, we actually went door to door and uh the ones that were home, we have, you know, actually signed that they were in support for it. So uh we've we've only found two houses out of the eighty-eight houses in our neighborhood that were abusive. But for the most part, um people enjoy it. I'm sorry, Richard. So we're in Stevie Brook Heights, which is just off of the
What about some complaints about the bees dropping stuff on cars?
Right, so we need the pools. Right, um we did have one neighbor complaining about the bees affecting on cars. Um we can see it as well on our cars. It, we don't, it gets too much. We uh, you know, it comes off the soot and water or just sometimes there's water. Um they did complain about bees in the pools, but again, like, we don't know if there are bees or or wild bees.
You haven't tagged them.
So we actually had um that neighbor that complained about them being in their pool. We actually had another neighbor that's in sport that has pool that's closer to ours that say they never see bees in the pool. So, you know, I I understand some people aren't gonna aren't gonna be too fond of them, but you know, a little education as well. Um it comes a long way, so.
How far apart do the hives have to be from each other? Is there a
No, they're really not. I've I have hives that are side by side. Uh sometimes I'll turn them opposite directions where I'm at, obviously in a residential area, you wouldn't necessarily do that, but yeah, you can just put them There's no minimal distance now. Uh what typically you want to do is have them look a little different though, so the bees can identify which one comes home. Otherwise, they can go in the wrong box sometimes.
That's out of curiosity. The model ordinance calls for six production hives in a quarter acre to a half acre. The working group recommended eighty. So if there's two extra ones.
So I think a lot of that falls back to, you're gonna lose hives throughout the years. So it's it's a matter of keeping up with all the
Avoiding. Don, did you have any question, your comments? If you have more comments.
Just a very great comment. Um my reading, and I'm a newbie at this, uh I haven't gone again. Uh but uh I, my reading tells me that that's within, when they leave the hive, within six to ten feet, they're a tree top level. Uh so there's really very little danger, as I said, the honeybees are docile. Uh you know, problems are not with the honeybees, yellow jackets and everything else. The other thing, the uh um there there's a temperature issue because I think it's what, it's fifty, sixty degrees that they won't come out of the hive. I mean, they sort of stand high in the hives.
I'm sorry, it's more in the mid forties.
Okay, mid forties, okay. But and they will stay in the hive until that happens, they they will come out. So stay there. So, you know, the temperature.
So the bees, they are the maintenance?
No, they stay in the, I I'll let you speak to that here.
Um actually, they they cluster. So I don't know if you've ever seen the National Geographic with like the uh the penguin penguins, how they all kind of huddle together. Bees kind of do the same thing. Uh at the outside roof, outside one inch of it, so they'll form a ball the size of a soccer ball. Uh so like, it can look like a soccer ball area. And the outside one inch, they actually lock wings and it forms a barrier that's like a down comforter. So and the inside group vibrates to stay warm. They shiver basically.
But they work all year round. It solves the temperature is
That's correct. They'll stay in that ball until the the temperature gets above forty-five degrees and then they'll break, cluster. And then when it goes, so when we have those days where it comes up, like in January, it's seventy and then go back down to thirty, they'll come out during the seventy. They'll do a cleansing flight, which means they go out to the bathroom, and then they come back in at night and then they'll cluster again.
I don't know your neighborhood. Are you the only ones that have hives? The hives in your neighborhood, that you know?
Me.
Yeah, we are. Um Chris is aware of several other hives throughout the township. Exploring and getting hives.
Yeah, I know, we're Campbell Road, right off of, we're the uh farm standards. They have, they have, I think, ten hives. Uh and that's within fifty feet of the sprint township and the properties that that hold them near the sign. That's a hell of a township.
David, one last question. This item B here and B proposed by the working group, hive shall not be located within ten feet of primary residential. That's why you're good with that.
Oh yeah, ours are already well outside of that.
Okay. Okay. Well, for the ecological benefit of this, I really think that it's important we adopt this work, it's need to facilitate bees here in the township. Uh, I really applaud the working group's efforts and listeners' efforts, township staff putting together, and I think you're a great model of work. Uh, and I would support adopting all of the working groups' suggestions to this ordinance. Input for both the thirty-foot setback, ten-foot, uh, stretching near the primary residential entranceway and the hive, uh. Eight hives, ten hives and fifteen hives for, for the respective lots. So move.
Um.
Because don't, you have to, we have to approve this and then advertise.
Correct.
That is a motion to approve with all the working groups' recommendations to the ordinance.
So that, that's a motion to approve to advertise?
No, it's a motion to approve the ordinance. And then move through the normal advertising in a, a, a process. Yeah, so it's to initiate. It's to approve it in the form. Of the ordinance as presented with all of the working group recommendations.
And you can add.
And duly, and duly advertise the ordinance. For adoption.
Sorry, I, I don't, I don't get the whole idea of approving the or. I mean, you couldn't.
So what actually we need to.
Well, I think if I respect Carl's motion, it was to approve. Which, what were being requested was do you, we're proving the working bees changes to the draft ordinance?
That's correct.
And then to advertise with those changes. No, no second.
What do you need, Don?
I need to take a.
Okay.
So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? No. So passes through. So that will be advertised, oh boy, um.
Yes.
Yes. Well, it'll be, it'll be advertised probably at second. Or, or.
It gets easy.
You probably have a hundred percent back.
Yes, I'm sure. All right. And I don't have anything further to ask for, please. Manager's report.
I have nothing to add to my written report.
Questions for more?
Oh, I, yeah, I do have a question, um. This was actually in the community development report, but are, are the comprehensive plan steering committee meetings held virtually at all?
The, the first one was held in person. One, one person did attend virtually. The next meeting, which is next Tuesday, the second, that one is a hundred percent virtual.
Great, thank you. And, and the, the other thing that caught my attempt, my attention. Is, uh, well, first of all, it's great that I see what's happening at the zoning hearing board the next time. I don't think that was always in our reports before, so thank you for putting that into the community development report. I, I'm not sure exactly how to address this, but I, the sign request, thirty-four, thirty Eastern Boulevard. You know, you, we don't, I, we don't know, I don't know the facts and I don't know what they're arguing, but. All of those sign requests. Generally seem to not have a, a, a hard charge being remedied. So I, I'm not sure what I'm asking for.
And tomorrow, just, just to clarify. The zoning officer will send out all the materials to the zoning hearing board tomorrow. It's always sent out the Friday. Prior to the meeting the following week. And, um, when I get those, I will forward that same email to the board supervisors.
Well, is that something we could go on notice agenda? That we could just again and see that. At board and all of its contents. They're not on notice agenda. So their documents are PDFs too, right?
Do you just keying up them?
Yeah, well, they get delivered and, and email as well, both.
They still get physical packets?
That is correct.
But there is a digital packet.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
Both.
Not through notice.
No, but what I'm saying is we, the supervisor. You, you could make a separate meeting. If you will, on notice and put the same material there and then we can go in and look at it. Supervisors digitally without you having to do special emails or you doing special email, because you have to do a little notice up.
Yeah.
And create this.
I have, yeah. Agenda. Like twelve.
Yeah, it may be more problematic than I'm thinking, but there might be.
It has to be tied to something.
They, they typically Dropbox it to me and I click, click on the Dropbox, like it download all the information.
Well, now this is our official Dropbox channel. That's why I think we use that channel. And if we could explore it, I'd just say, and because the zoning hearing board is scheduled and regular, it's just like our case, and that's where I thought it should. That way it's, it's ahead of time.
I finally got them to agree to email it to me and now I'm messing that up. Making that harder.
I'm just trying to be proactive, Don, and use technology.
You, you will receive an email tomorrow because none of.
Yeah, you have, you have to look at your emails. We'll, we'll look into it.
Could you maybe text me and let me know when the email's there, so I know to go.
Text and email.
Just email.
US mail.
Email me.
That's all the questions I have as a manager.
Sorry, that's all the questions.
Before we go off of that manager's report, I should. Give the, the board an update that we did in the audience. We did meet with the neighborhood ten eleven Whiteford. Um, last week. We heard, we heard a lot from the participants. Um, what we kind of set, what they kind of settled on was not, not keeping Ebert's Lane Road. Bridge closed. When North Sherman Streets closed. That was a proposal we made. So they didn't like that, but we are gonna do the, the speed humps and the one ways. And Denny and I talked about. Ordering more speed humps today, so.
Were they in favor of this change?
They were in favor of the speed humps and the one ways.
Wow, not everybody was exactly in agreement, but the majority.
That's all.
Is there anything on your whole business that the supervisors need to discuss? Any new business? One thing I wanted to say quickly to the board supervisors and Mr. Luchia, I do have a plan set to be signed back there, so we appreciate your cooperating, the. Board can assign that. Thank you, everyone. Meeting's adjourned.